Race with the pledge please. Fledge of Legion.
To the flag, the United States of America and to your public which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ma'am Morandi?
Here.
Trustee Early?
Yes.
Trustee Miller is absent. Trustee Murphy?
Here.
Trustee Villado?
Here.
Okay, good evening everyone. Great to see so many people there. Unusual, but a good feeling. Happy New Year to everyone. We started meeting tonight. We have a public hearings, three resolutions. Yes, first is opposed amendments, chapter sixty-four, one-eleven and one-thirty-four regarding procedures for public hearing. Resolution zero-one dash two thousand nineteen adopting local law zero-one. I guess I'm getting the resolutions. The public hearing is for the amendment. You have to elaborate on the...
Yes, the purpose of the change to the code is to increase awareness within the village as to properties that are undergoing a public hearing by either the planning board, the CBA, or the historic district review board. To that end, the ZBA has proposed some language and procedures that we would like to adopt into chapter sixty-four, the HDRB chapter, chapter one-eleven, which is the subdivision chapter, and chapter one-thirty-four, which is zoning chapter. You can see that in each of the exhibitions for those chapters, the second paragraph is the same. The first paragraph, in some cases, has a small amendment to it. So for chapter sixty-four and the first paragraph, we've inserted the parentheses, one-zero right parentheses, to be consistent with the rest of the code. For chapter sixty-four, there's no such change, and for chapters one-eleven, there's no such change. Purpose of the local law change, as I mentioned, is to make increased public awareness as to the public hearings that are scheduled for various boards within the village. The procedure would be for the applicant to obtain one or two signs from the village clerk, which would contain information about which board is holding a meeting, a public hearing, and recommending that the public contact the village clerk for further information. Those signs would indicate, as I said, which board is having a meeting, and the signs would stay on the property until such time as all public hearings have been formally closed by all boards that have been involved in a public hearing on that property. That's the intent of the change.
Anything from the public? It is open. We'll keep it open for at least a half an hour or so. Aaron also, if you want to add anything, I think this was kind of moved ahead by you, which I think it's a great idea. So would you like to elaborate or say anything on that?
Marie covered pretty much all of it. I think all the boards will benefit, and the neighbors will have a little more transparency into what's going on. Not that there's not transparency, but it'll be easier for them to learn about it. So thank you.
I think it'll be a benefit to the better residents to not seeing, like, people that are curious about something, now there'll be actually a sign with information on it. So I think it's a good thing. As far as the sign goes, are you gonna... There's no design or we haven't approved anything like that. Will you get something to us, or what you're intending on doing?
I think we've sent that to Jeff and he's gonna handle it.
Okay. Yeah, I had not considered this before, just a question. I get notifications from the village on various things going to happen, garbage and leafs, and could this kind of thing be added to that list of notifications? I had not considered that before, I just gave it mind.
I don't see how. I did, this would be individual properties.
I see what you're doing.
Those email blasts for a public hearing, he does that as soon as we know there's gonna be one. So if you're getting email blasts, you should get a notice, for example.
Good, that's fine.
And maybe come on.
Thank you.
Yes, Frank. Just reading this, wherever it's talking about five days notice, whether it's for whatever reason, I think that's probably not... I think ten days notice would be better. Part of that is the mail deliveries. We've noticed in the last several years now that sometimes mail deliveries are not really timely, and so I think that, you know, visible notice, like postings or newspapers, kind of maybe can cover some of those mailed notices. It may sometimes fall through cracks because of the newspapers.
So Frank, if you look at chapter sixty-four, it says ten days. In paragraph one. Chapter sixty-four dash twelve, HDRB again, says ten days.
Sure.
Chapter one-eleven says ten days. The one, chapter one-eleven dash seven says five days, and zoning says ten days. So your comment is not about the change that we're proposing, but rather the current code?
I guess, yeah. And also, one-eleven-five says five days for newspaper.
I'll look.
And also, one-thirty-five-twenty-five says five days for... I think that should be ten days.
Okay, again, that's the current code, not the change that is being proposed to?
Yes.
And that's just, that's in the newspaper?
Yes.
If somebody's in the current code says that the historic district has to be published twice, I don't know. I don't see that in the other chapters, but has to be published at least twice in the villages. I don't know what that means or anything.
I'm sorry, where are you saying?
Where is this? Last chapter, section sixty-four dash six. Notice should also be published at least twice in the villages. It says it's gotta be ten days ahead of time, but then it also says... Oh, I'm sorry, that's the mail's ten days, and it says twice. I don't know if that means anything, it's different there from the other two.
It's what they follow, practice it.
Presumably that means twice before the hearing.
I'm sorry?
Presumably that means twice before the hearing.
Yes.
I would say that we normally, on the zoning board, we normally do put it in for two issues, but having it as five allows us to get something done within one month if we need to, otherwise it would stretch out until the next month in order to meet the notification requirements.
So going from five to ten days could potentially, based upon the schedule of meetings of the ZBA, could potentially push you into the following month for a hearing?
Yes, it could slow things down for sure.
So I suspect...
But we do do twice when we can.
So I suspect that's the rationale for why it is five. It's to be more expedient so that the applicant can have a timely public hearing. Are you okay with that?
Whenever possible, it should be, you know, ten days is probably... People, sometimes people just go away for a week, they get home, wait for work or vacation, and by the time they come back, it's like a week, and it's too late, you know, they miss it.
Well, now, keep in mind that the adjacent property owners receive a registered letter or certified. What is it?
Yeah, they get a letter.
Thank you. They get a letter which they have to sign for, and we will now have these signs posted on the property. So if someone, if someone goes away for five days and they, and they don't have an opportunity to see this, they will probably, okay, so they probably won't be aware that this is happening. Keeping in mind that the village website posts the public hearings online, and as Fran said, there's an email blast that goes out. So it sounds as if keeping it at five days for the advertisement in the paper permits, as I said before, it permits the boards to be as expedient as possible in conducting the public hearings, so that the applicant can have as quick a possible turnaround. If we were to go to ten days with the publication schedule of the newspapers, and the, I believe the closing date for publication of public notices is Monday for the PCNR, I'm not sure what it is for the Highlands Court, but if you don't get it in by Monday of this week, you have, it won't go in until Monday the following week, and you need now ten days, and so the public hearing could be in the month of March or delayed.
Are there any hearings that happen before the publication, like on Tuesdays? Are those the ones that need an extra Mondays? You know, if you've got hearings on Wednesday evening or Thursday evening, then at least there's that Wednesday when the publication will... But if you have a hearing that happens on a Tuesday or Monday...
Tuesday, the schedule for the meetings for the ZBA, I don't, I don't know what date of the week it is, but Tuesdays, it's practically impossible to get this room for a meeting because the board meets the first, second, and fourth Tuesdays of the month. One of our constraints is meeting space.
I think we can do this since we're not, we're not, we can't change this tonight anyway, is that we can send this to the boards, and if the boards would like to weigh in on whether five or the reason for five versus ten, I think we can go from there. It would mean another resolution, another change, so we can...
But we can vote on this resolution?
Yeah, we can vote on this because it's not affecting that. I think we can, if we can, we'll send to the boards and ask them, you know...
Sounds good.
Their feelings on that.
Donald has a question.
Oh, Donald, sorry.
Donald McDonald, Ten B Street. I just wanted to say on the sign noticing that as a former chair of ZBA for a number of years, we had a, issued a ZBA application that I can say was emotionally damaging to all concerned, went on for years, and I think everybody at those hearings would have said and did say, a number of people said that we wish we had noticed, we don't read the legal ads in the paper, and one of the ideas was this sign, and we've tried a number of years to get action on it, and I just want to thank the board for considering it and bringing this far, and Aaron for writing it up. And I think that, I can speak for everybody that was involved with that saga, that this was a good thing. We've had a lot of heartache in the future.
Aaron's a man of action. I agree. I'll keep the hearing open. What we have to do, and we've talked about, is putting a closing time or whatever on the, on the agenda, which we haven't, so just in case someone sees seven and, you know, it's no ending, except our time. So I'll leave it open, but continue with our, continue with our meeting, which we have done. And if anyone walks in, then we can, yeah, ask them if they're here for the public hearing or not, and then close at around seven-thirty. Is there any other questions or comments? Yep. So we'll get to our monthly, monthly reports. Recreation, we do not have anything from, I don't think we have anything from planning.
Police Department.
Did I miss the police department? Oh, sorry Larry. You are...
Happy New Year, everybody. For the month of December, the police reports, the calls we had were fifty-two. We had two arrests, we had one male for unauthorized use of vehicle, which was a suspended license. Received his vehicle, he paid the proper fines to the motor vehicle, and he was released with his vehicle a couple of hours later. We also had a female for disorderly conduct last month. I didn't get the total details on that, I just got back from vacation, but I think it was just a verbal, verbal dispute that the person had on Main Street. We had twenty moving violations last month, and we had twenty-five parking tickets, a total of fifty-five summonings.
The vehicle, I think we're voting on that later?
Yes, sir. The vehicle and also the officer, if you wanted to put those together while I'm standing here, if not...
With that, yeah, if you would like to comment on either.
Yes, we did an extensive interview with Kenny Baker. Kenny is a former NYPD police officer that I interviewed myself on numerous occasions, also the board and the mayor had a chance to interview him. As long as the board okay's it, we're looking to hire Kenny to open, have one of the slots that we have open to fill, to bring us up, an extra officer, since we've been down one since last April, I believe it was. And if it is approved tonight, Kenny will start tomorrow on training. He will get between six and eight shifts with another officer to train him with the village's about, you know, the addresses, where he is in the village, what's going on, any of the village ordinance or laws that he wouldn't know, he'll get copies of those. Ed Bolinger will train him, he'll go with him for a few shifts, he'll go with me for a few shifts, we'll do a couple of day tours, four-to-twelves, and also be nights, to get him acclimated to the village. I will get a chance to, anybody wants to meet him, try to get him out so best we can, walk him around the village on one of my shifts during the day, so we get to the businesses and wherever else we need to get to. The vehicle, as we speak, as long as it's approved, also tonight by the board, looking at a, hopefully having it by the beginning of next month, and it should be ready to go, it should have everything on it, should be all police, with the police markings on it. It's not gonna be the one that's on the charger, that's also gonna be changed next month. It's gonna be exactly like we have on the Tahoe and the other vehicles, Cold Spring Police, black and white, it's gonna be black on the, white on the doors, black police and everything, be taken care of. So for, that's the schedule, it'll be the first week in February.
Thank you.
Where does Mr. Baker live?
He lives across the county, he lives over in Patterson. I believe he's done twenty, he just retired, actually beginning of this year, in the NYPD. He's had twenty-two, I believe he's twenty-two years with them. He was detective in an investigation squad. He brings a lot of experience on investigations and also living in a smaller area than has he did in Patterson for the last couple of years, and he understands what we're looking for in the village, with the community policing and stuff like that.
Yeah, if you want to jump to that one? Okay, we'll jump around a little bit since we're on that. So we have the two items that Larry had talked about, one is hiring of Ken Baker, so I'll make a motion to hire Mr. Baker.
One second, ma'am.
Do we have a discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the last is that consider lease agreements for the purchase of new police vehicle. I'll make a motion to approve the lease.
Okay.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I know that the lease agreement Jeff and Michelle, I believe, went to all the banks to find financing for it, or you did, sorry.
Which one do we...
It's okay.
M and T?
M and T, yes. One of the company that had given us the lease, I think, on the highway department truck that we bought last time, we're not quoting this, they say it was too small, we couldn't give us anything like under about eight and a half or nine percent. And then someone else that we tried was like higher, was in the five-plus range. So we're on M and T.
We'll walk the bank.
Yep.
Okay, back to the monthly reports. I think it's finally on schedule with that one. We do have one from the planning board. Let's see, first is old business, one-twenty-four Main Street, Hussein Abdohadi, one-twenty-four Main Street, located in the B one in Historic District, application is for change of permitted use and interior alterations for chapter one-thirty-four subsection one-thirty-four dash nine in the village code, change of permitted use from a hotel, from a restaurant to a hotel. Ten rooms total is required from the planning board, change of application for twelve rooms to ten rooms received on twelve-twenty-seven, two thousand and eighteen. I think I, just to be clear on that one, this is Jimmy Silver Spoon. The application is for the change of permitted use of the interior alterations from the restaurant to ten-room hotel. A coordinator view of the application is underway with HDRB as lead agency, the planning board will follow the lead agency awaiting its determination on the issue of changes to the exterior of historic structure in the National District. The planning board requests notification from the village board if, when the stew property is sold to the applicant. This title ownership will be a condition of approval, as the applicant will need to take ownership to make necessary modifications to provide ADA compliant access to the proposed new hotel.
We approved that, didn't we?
Was that?
We approved that before.
Yeah, we did approve that.
They haven't, sorry. I want us to jump to, not like January, that happens.
Okay. Let's see, nothing from Brian. Or zoning board? Would you like me to read, or would you like to? New business none, current business none. Thank you, Aaron. Todd Phillips Allen?
Good evening, everybody, and happy new year to everybody, hoping for a nice holiday season. As a reporter last month, as you know, Nancy Montgomery got left as a county legislator, we had a vacant seat for her, and if everyone's not aware, it's been in the paper last week, so we approved, appointed Judy Farrell to that position, and she'll be the new person on the town board, a council lady on the town board with us. So we look forward to working with Judy, has a good resume, good background, easy to get along with, so I think she'll be a good addition to the board.
Was she sworn in?
Yes, she was, on our first meeting of the year, January third, I think it was, she was sworn in. And Nancy Montgomery sworn in, too. As a reporter last month, you know, we're still in litigation with the cell tower, Route nine. We did ask for a change of attorney to represent the town of Phillips Allen, because we weren't too happy with the attorney that we had. Anyway, that's in the process, and it's been approved. I don't know who the new attorney is right now, but we should be, I think we'll have that name any day now. But anyway, we were too pleased with that.
Was that approval by, by your board, or by who?
By the...
The courts?
By, yeah, the courts had approved. Well, it's, we go through our insurance company, he gives us the lawyer, right? So that's how we get the lawyer. So we went to our insurance company and requested a new attorney, and they granted it to us. We weren't just, we weren't getting a lot of feedback from him, he was kind of like isolated himself to us, wasn't giving us a lot of feedback to what we need to do, we didn't feel that was right, so we asked that he replace, and he's gonna be replaced. I don't know who the person is, but definitely it's been approved. As a reporter last month, we did, we were thinking about making a change to the chapter one-seventy-five of the zoning, as indicated last month, we tabled that, but we did approve it this past month. So this is a change for the, to add art gallery slash museum to the property up on Route nine there, the Magagino location. The Spanos will still be privately holding the building, so they're still gonna pay taxes on it, so that was our concern, that we want that way, they would not pay taxes on it. They're gonna still hold the building, Magagino's gonna be the entity that's gonna be using the space, but it's still gonna be held privately with the Spanos, so they're gonna continue to pay taxes on it. So this gives them an ability now to actually be a museum. Right now, they had to have type of appointments for people to come in and to see the museum. So now they can bypass their appointments, they can be open, and anybody, anytime, when they're open, can come into the museum and the art gallery now. So it kind of gives them a lot more freedom, a lot more ability to attract more people to go there, so things, I think it's a good thing.
How's that gonna work with the, in general, for all of, you know, for Phillips Allen or for the ninth board, or, or anyone else?
It's gonna be a type, each case is gonna be different, how we're gonna look at that. It's gonna be, understand what you're saying, it could be a requisite for other people to look at that type of space, so...
Yeah, I think that was one of the concerns.
Yeah, it was a concern, but Richard didn't seem, we didn't seem to be too concerned about that, to be quite honest, but we'll have to take it, as each applicant comes up and take it from there. The planning board also decided, thought it was a good idea as well, even though they did have a lot of questions and reservations about it, but they did, thought it was a good idea to change it, so we're looking at that. Also, oh, most of all, I've been talking about this for quite some time, the town wall bids and so forth. I did the report last month that we had to get an asbestos inspection. That person showed up last Friday, it's gonna take him a week, week and a half, not every single day, but he said he needs about ten days to turn around asbestos report. So that's supposed to be the last step for this, so we get that done, then we can finally put this building up a bit. As we indicated, we're gonna be out of that building for probably over a year, the way things are now. We're probably gonna get some modular trailers to put in the parking lot, and we're also maybe talking to the veterans over here and see if we can have some space from them or something like that. We're not a hundred percent sure yet exactly, but that's the two ideas that we possibly have for that.
We're gonna have court.
Well, we were gonna, we thought, possibly talking to you, possibly maybe we could use this space, possibly, we don't know yet, we gotta, we gotta think about that. Once the bids come out, we got, we're gonna have some time, it's not, you know, we're gonna have time to plan this all out, but good, I know what you said about the court, that was one of our biggest concerns.
Yes, it's a busy one.
Yeah, it's pretty busy. Okay. Okay, also let you know that we put a new gym floor down at the rec center, it's about ninety-nine percent completed at this point. We had the rock, the wood was buckling quite a bit over the last several years, so we bit the bullet, we took the wood out and put a new surface in. It's like a rubbery surface, it's very similar to the surface that found the capishes. It's really nice, it looks just like wood, I mean, if you look at it closely, you know, it's not wood, but it kind of looks like wood, and it's supposed to be lasting a real long time, so it's gonna look really nice. I was checking it out the other day, they're in the process now of just putting the lines and so forth like that on. So hopefully we'll be back in business in a year from now, or a year, next week or so for now. Also, I want to report, it's been my pleasure for the last three and a half years of being liaison here for the Phillips Cold Spring. My position has been changed to Judy Farrell, so I will no longer be attending these meetings. I enjoyed coming here the last three and a half years, and maybe I'll still show up once in a while, but I was told Judy's taken this position because she lives in the village, so...
We'll miss you.
I'll miss you, too. Again, I appreciate the last three and a half years reporting here, so thank you again.
Thank you, Bob.
Historic District Review, we do not have anything from. Fire Company, do we have anything to report? I did meet with the new, the new chief and with Matt Stills, who still is resident, and we went over a few things. When's our, when's our meeting regarding the district coming up?
I don't know.
Twenty-second or something?
What's that, next week?
The end of this month.
Yeah, the end of the month. The Culver Fire Company requested me with us to discuss the potential for them becoming a fire district. So I had a preliminary meeting with them before, last week, and we talked about a few things, my concerns on it. Anyway, we will have that meeting, we did discuss other things about some improvements that need to be done definitely on the, on the building and the possibility of getting another, an engineering report or reviewing what we had because of the condition of the building. So there is work that has to be done there, it's a village property, I want to see what happens to the R property, what happens to the Ford Motorship property, we're just gaving in. So we do have a new roof fund at this year, and there is concerns and needs, so I guess we'll discuss all of that at the, at the meeting with the Fire Company, which is, I'm not sure, next week or two weeks?
No, it's not next week, it's probably twenty-second.
Hey, it was the twenty-second. I just read it.
That's all I have from them, or that's all I have to report on that. Parking Committee, we do not have, and we have to start that up again as quickly as possible, so we'll be doing that soon. Tree Advisory, we thought you'd be here to trumpet the success and the, so we missed you.
Happy New Year, I'm sorry. The, we didn't meet in December, so, and we also have had a lot on our plate.
I love my plate.
So I'm here now, thank you guys for your support, move on this fifty thousand dollar grant for the village, which we're already off and running on. That's my main report is, we re-upped our application for Tree City USA status, which will be our third year, which Dave signed over the holidays, thank you. And I've met with Jeff and with the D E C coordinator on the grant via email, and we met the first benchmark, which is insurance papers and stuff, and now we're working on the contract. I have a meeting with Dave next week, hopefully some other important people, to talk about, now's the time to kind of adjust all of the details to sort of fit the current reality on the ground. We applied for the grant, we didn't know we would get it, and we've taken down some trees, we've done some really hazardous pruning that had to get done, so we need to kind of sub, sub in and out a few details, so that'll be in the works. That's our, those are our main things to report, we have a missing link, so things I won't tell you, but if you guys have any questions about that process...
I just want to thank you, I think, I know you put a lot into it, and I know the year before was frustrating, so I'm glad, I'm glad it all happened and it, and it's great, and I was just lucky to have people, you know, volunteering and doing that, so thank you.
Well, it's gonna be really exciting, I think, so the, they'll be, most of the stuff will be only exciting for me and the tree board members, because it'll be pruning that no one else will notice, but people will know, yes, sorry, but it'll be exciting. People who have seen some of the quality of... People who have seen some of the quality of the dangerous limbs in the village lately will notice that those will be greatly improved, because those are our first priority. Plus, we're going to have a smattering of new tree pit guards on Main Street. Um, our goal is, you know, one or two at least per block on the most stressed trees, so, um, that'll hopefully jumpstart maybe more people sponsoring those. Um, and, you know, we have a variety of other things, including tagging all of the trees, um, in our tree inventory, so that when I talk to Bugsy and, or talk to, um, you know, Jerry Allen or, or some other tree professional and reference a tree, we don't have to say, you know, the Norway maple, it's kind of to the south of, you know, 192 Main Street or whatever, now we'll have, we have a number, and they can confirm it, and there'll be no mistakes. So, yes.
Oh, those tree guards that you're talking about, you always talk about on Main Street, can they be put also on the side streets?
They can.
If somebody wants to sponsor one of their homes?
Yes, they can, absolutely. The, there have been a few inquiries about them so far. The ones on the side streets, particularly in the lower village, um, would be very useful. In the upper village, where there's that long tree lawns, I mean, some of them are very narrow, um, the guards could be smaller and they'd be less expensive, because the trees have lots of space to root in, they don't have to be like at these fences, so, yeah, anybody can sponsor them in the village, we have the prototypes already there. That's great.
The first round of, uh, tree cutting, is everything good, completed or not?
No, uh, he still has, I just talked to him today, he still has a couple, uh, stumps and a couple small prunings left, and then he'll be finished with that. But he got the big stuff done.
And was there a decision made on Church Street, um, for the stump with the rising sidewalk, what we were going to do there or no?
I think we're going to plant grass now, that's what's there, and you're going to fix the curb, while that, Bugsy tells.
I spoke with her, and she felt the best way for that stump to rot was to leave it exposed. And I said, I'll talk to Jen, because she knows a lot more about it than I ever will, so, I don't know if she's got it.
I talked to her already, okay, but the, but the concern was the, the curb? Or the side, yeah.
I think it's a safety issue from a village standpoint, not a aesthetics and how we want it.
Well, the sidewalk is fine, it's the, it's the curb on the side that makes it drop off, right? That, that's the main problem. So, the, the issue is, we want to let the, the stump rot, and obviously make it safe, um, because it's going to save a lot of, you guys a lot of money, and it's going to save them a lot of time. We just let it rot, and as soon as the sidewalk starts moving, then have them take it out. Um, it'll be a lot easier, trust me, it'll be like a time, that stump is like, really big.
Drill some holes in it?
Yeah, the, we were going to, that was what we were going to do, drill some holes in it, put some dirt over it, put some grass on it, and it should be, you know, next year it'll probably start this year here, that's the idea. I talked to her about it, I thought she...
Oh, she, uh...
Okay, I'll talk to her again about it, it's fine. Yeah, so that's, I don't know if you guys have any other questions, but, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks to have you here. Marie?
Yes. In the month of December, the Code Update Committee conducted two meetings. The committee began on a document to address the topic of evaluate permitting of conservation subdivisions. A draft document was developed on the topic of evaluate permitting of outright demolition of existing structures. On the topic of amend subdivision requirements, it was agreed to expand the topic to include SASS, which is the Scenic Areas of Statewide Significance. A list of exception actions was developed for the topic of evaluate adopting Warfront Consistency Review Law. The topic of evaluate permitting of conservation and facade easements has been modified to become evaluate, evaluate permitting of conservation easements. In other words, the facade easements will be dropped for the Village of Cold Spring Code Update. NYSRDA has agreed to this, uh, and the reason why NYSRDA has agreed is we do not have any conservation organizations, facade building conservation organizations in the village, unlike New York City, which has the Conservancy Group. So, there is no one to, to give a facade easement to the Village of Cold Spring. And that's it.
Thank you. Water wastewater, or water department's first report, we did have bad news along with Greg. What's that? Oh, Greg is here.
Just a tie, I thought we were... You ahead or left behind, wow, here we go.
No, we're ahead.
Glasses, we need glasses. A lot of people say yes. Get hold of, there we go, okay. We set up in wastewater. We had three non-compliance events in the month of December, two at the plant and one in the system. The first one was relatively minor, the quality of the water going out into the Hudson River, uh, in one liter of water is allowed 0.3 milliliters of solids, we had 0.5, so it was this rather than that. Reported it, everything's fine, it was due to a clogged valve that keeps the blanket low, and the clarifier is the last stage where everything settles out, and the clear water goes out in the affluent to the Hudson, with valve clogged overnight, and so that offsets the balance of the depth of the blanket, and so we had a little bit of a washout. Second one was on the 21st, which was when we had the 2.64 inches of rain that fell overnight, and so that was a different kind of a washout. Instead of 0.3, we had 75 milliliters per liter, which is quite a bit of, uh, very, very obvious to the eye as it went out. But it was due to the hydraulic overload, we got eye-to-eye problems, we know it, we know it for years, that much rain in that short amount of time just kicks up the flow pushing through the plant, and that's the result. At a break. So, and then finally, on the evening of the 23rd, Sunday evening, uh, Christmas Eve, Eve, sanitary sewer overflow, you may or may not have heard of that one, right down in front of the bandstand, manhole number two. It was right when you had the event down there with everyone coming into the village wanting to get to that bandstand for the final picture, and there we were. The rains from the 21st pushing through the mains, there's always an amount of grease that's there, there's a plaque kind of lining the bottom of the mains, uh, when that water comes rushing through, sometimes it gets kind of underneath, it breaks it up, it pushes it downstream. It gets to the bandstand and hangs a left to go south to the pump station. Well, it didn't all make it, okay, it all kind of formed a, a large mass of grease. There was still water passing through it, that's why we didn't catch on to it. Pump station was still pumping, but it wasn't getting all of it, because it was getting backed up by this clog. So, uh, we found out about it about 10 minutes to 5:00 that night, got right down there, called Fred Cook from Montrose for their janitor back there, came up and blasted through it. They got there at 7:00 by 7:20, it was already flowing water. So, quick note of thanks to Bob Downey, Officer Bajarski, for getting detour signs in place to help keep pedestrians from walking through the affected areas. Thanks as well to Scott Monroe for his assistance from beginning to the end. Chief Smith and the members of Culver Fire Company Number One for washing down the whole area. We had, asked them to come down and just kind of clear everything out of the standing water. It was making its way to the storm drains, but it was pooling in spots, so we diverted people as they were walking. There were a few spots where they could kind of walk over and get to the dock, you know, whatever they wanted to do, but it was a interesting night. That's that. That's it on wastewater. Any questions? So then, uh, the water department, really only one thing to report at this stage, we received word that our longtime engineering consultant, Park Clark, has accepted a full-time position in a township in Connecticut, and will no longer be available to us for future projects. Uh, he has committed to following through on several projects that we're already in the middle of, such as the DEP connection, uh, while we look for a new firm to work with. He's been working with the village actually longer than I have, coming up on 25 years that he's been involved in the village, so the guy's, he was quite an asset, and it's going to be tough to replace him. We wish him well and thank him for his diligence and dedication to the village, and that's all. Regarding DEP, uh, we've contacted them again, they've got projects that they're going to be in the area on, right at the kind of slope of the road, they're going to be working in the area where they want us to connect to, so hopefully, you know, we'll get, since they'll be in our area, maybe they'll remember where we are and have something.
See everybody.
Thanks, uh, for the people that haven't worked with Barter, don't know Bart, Bart's a, a really great guy and really has helped us and been, like as Greg said, for, I, I didn't realize as long as he had been, um, I, I knew he was here for a while, but not that long, but, uh, it's always been a pleasure to work with him. He's a really knowledgeable guy, and a guy you want in your corner when we're talking to, uh, DEP or, or anyone regarding our water systems, so, uh, we'll definitely miss him.
We're working on getting electronic files and everything, so that we have, you know, the database that he's working from, if, in case there's anything I don't have on my shelf or, you know, on my PC, so we'll have the ability to not have to backtrack and, you know, relook at things that have already been done, you know, by him in his office, so, got to hope.
So, we don't have ads out for him yet, but we're working on that.
Working on it, R F P F, maybe a trustee or two, so, you know, we work kind of in a little mini committee or something to get together to try to put something together.
I saw something here.
Just let me know, and then we'll just...
All right.
All right.
Thank you. Yeah, we can do that. I'll do the building report. New building permits, nine, building permits issued, seven, uh, COs issued, three, title searches, two, complaints received, one, HDRB referrals, two, ZBA, one. Of note, 6 Chestnut Street has applied after the fact for a shed at the rear of the property. Homeowners were contacted by code enforcement officer and subsequently applied for the permit, refer to the HDRB and ZBA rear yard setback. Applications and permit fees collected, $875, title search fees collected, $150, total collected for the month of December, $1,025. Michelle, you weren't here for the public hearing, were you?
No.
Okay. We left it open, so I just wanted to make sure. Highway report?
Evening, everybody, happy new year. Let's see, garbage totaled this month, uh, a little over 40 tons, recycling, we are just a hair over 30 tons. For the most part of December, we are just maintaining, taking care of the leaves, getting them up off the grounds and out of the gutters. We did a final cleanup of McConville Park and twice at the dock to clean up from the flooding. We received and stamped a delivery of cones and barriers. We attempted to assist the recreation department in winterizing the bathrooms at Mayor's Park, but the early cold snap had already split one pipe. We had one brush pickup in December, and we also continued filling potholes, which seemed to grow rapidly. We started installing a new air tank on the 89 International Dump Truck. We installed a new curb brush on the head of the Bobcat. The 2003 International was towed over to 9W Truck Repair to determine and fix why it wouldn't start. Cause of the problem was the high pressure oil pump was faulty. New pump was installed with, along with some other necessities. For the month of January, we will button up any residual leaves and finish with the potholes. After that, we will be concentrating on organizing the highway department grounds and finishing the preparations for winter. Yes?
Do you want to put you on the spot, I was reviewing, uh, minutes that we're approving tonight, last month our garbage was 70, 75 tons, and this month it's like 40 tons?
Correct.
Why, didn't we eat most of it or?
We had, uh, one more week in the month of November, so instead of your normal four, we had five, but also, uh, brush pickup, which being down to one garbage truck, um, for a couple weeks there greatly limited me to what I could do, um, as far as dumping it in and then bringing it to Benedict, or just bringing it straight down to, uh, the plant to be burned. We will be looking into completely going over to Benedict and getting rid of it, especially after seeing the totals from last month.
Thank you.
Who or what is Benedict?
Oh, Benedict is where we dump all our organics.
Oh, okay.
Yep, at the end of Benedict.
Yeah, so, what you're saying is you were using, you were disposing of it at Wheel of Rayer?
Yes, unfortunately, we had to go to Wheel of Rayer, and seeing the numbers is greatly, motivates me to not go there anymore.
Tree pickup, everyone will be calling?
Uh, tree pickup for, uh, the month of January will be every Wednesday this month, the 9th, the 16th, um, the 23rd, and I believe the 30th. There will also be a brush pickup on the 16th, which is the second, second or third one, 3rd Wednesday.
Next week.
Yes.
Are there any, uh, local municipalities that have, uh, something more, uh, like recycling of woods or whatever that we could tie into, where, where it would be burned, or they have like a compost program going or something?
I can look into that. Beacon, I know, they ask the residents to blow their leaves out into a pile in front of their house, and they come and pick them up that way. I can get in touch with, uh, head of Beacon's Highway Department and find out what they're doing with it all, because they're, they're coming up with greater numbers than we are, just for their sheer size, and I'd love to see what they're doing with it.
What about at the town? At the town dump?
We don't, the only thing at the town dump is that we've got some trees that have to be taken down, that's about the only thing we put up there. We have our recycling, of course, plastics and metals.
Do you burn anything?
No, we do not. Maybe just be chip up the Christmas trees.
Going to.
That's what we're coming to. She's very happy about it. We're going to be chipping them this year, so.
Okay, does this prove anything else? Thank you, and thanks for the cleanup down, for the people that didn't see the river on some of these, uh, high tides, there was a lot of debris all, all over the whole area, so, it does take a lot of time and that takes away from everything else, so, uh, nice job, it was cleaned up quickly, so, thank you. Justice report, fines forfeited, veils and civil penalties, $4,175, parking tickets, $1,300, uh, civil fees, 105, mandatory state surcharges, $2,067, for a total of $7,647. Before we get into the reports, but trustees, if there's any on, is there anything else on the public hearing? If not, I will make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
I'm sorry, who's second?
I did.
Ball in favor? So then we should go to the, we'll shoot back up to the top, um, for, uh, resolution 01, which one is first here? Yes, okay. Resolution 01-2019, adopting local law 01 of 2019, amending chapter 64 regulating historic district. Whereas the Village of Cold Spring Board of Trustees has caused to be prepared a draft of the local law to amend chapter 64 of the village code regulating a historic district, and whereas the Village of Cold Spring Board of Trustees held a duly notice public hearing on the draft amended local law on January 8, 2019, and whereas the Village of Cold Spring Board of Trustees has complied with requirements of the, uh, State Environmental Quality Review Act as it applies to adoption of the draft amended local law, now therefore be resolved that the local law number one of 2019 is hereby adopted, and the village clerk is authorized and directed to take all of the actions necessary to complete the local law adoption procedure, including filings said local law with the New York State Office of the Secretary of State. I will make a motion to adopt.
In a second.
Roll call.
Trustee Miller is absent, trustee Early?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Deloto?
Yes.
Mayor Randy?
Yes. Thank you. Uh, next is resolution 2, 2019, adopting local law 02 of 2019, amending chapter 1111, regulating subdivision of land. I'm not going to review the same. Now therefore be resolved that local law number two, 2019, is hereby adopted, and the village clerk is authorized and directed to take all the actions necessary to complete the local law adoption procedure, including filing said local law with the New York State Office of the Secretary of State. I'll make a motion to adopt, uh, local law 02 of 2019.
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Early?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Deloto?
Yes.
Mayor Mirandi?
Yes.
And finally, Resolution 3, 2019, amending Chapter 134 regulating zoning. Now therefore be resolved that Local Law Number 3 of 2019 is hereby adopted and the village clerk is authorized and directed to take all of the actions necessary to complete the local law adoption procedure, including filing said local law with the New York State Office of the Secretary of State. I'll make a motion to adopt Local Law 03, 2019.
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Early?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Deloto?
Yes.
Mayor Mirandi?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you again, Erin.
Thank you.
Anything, reports from the board? Did have a number of meetings. I said I met with Fire Company and then also met today with Greg Warner from the building, our code enforcement officer, and with Jeff and Marie Seddon also.
And Erin.
And what's that?
Erin.
And Erin also, sorry. And to discuss kind of procedures and how to make things more streamlined and procedures, which there were a few, there are a few loopholes since we've switched with Phillips Town. So we're trying to, trying to come up with a better plan on how to work everything and to make sure everything is covered and applicants are aware of what they need to do. And we are also, you know, know what, you know, we should be doing. There is a kind of a disconnect in a couple of spots, which I won't get into, but we were trying to iron that out. So we did meet today for a couple of hours on that and a little follow-up. I did also talk to Kathleen, who's co-chair or whatever, or vice chair of HDRB and regarding it. So there are other issues that weren't brought up at the meeting that we'll go over and try to, try to come up with better procedures and make things flow a little easier on the building department area. That's all I have. We did 14 and 15 already. 16 approved renewal of service and maintenance contract with managed technologies. This is Anthony Adama's company. It's the same as last year with a reduction of $25 a month for one of the funds. I'd like to make a motion to renew the services maintenance contract with managed technologies.
Oh, second now.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Are there two contracts planned or just the one?
Um, there's just the one at this point. I believe there is another one for the police cars.
Next we have approval of 2018 Fireman's Service Award Point Listing. Everyone has to sign this tonight, so don't go away without signing.
The date is incorrect, at least in one case.
Oh, on the list?
Yeah. Greg Phillips no longer lives at 10 New Street.
Is that hiding you?
Is that it on here?
And some of the other people, I mean, this is just Cold Spring, but they're, they live in Nelson Road.
I think they live at Covert's Cold Spring there.
Oh, they said Covert's Cold Spring, but it says city-state exactly.
Oh, yeah.
Now, I thought he still lived with his mother.
I think he does. I don't know.
So I'll ask Jeff to follow up with those two. But you say you need the signatures tonight?
Yes. I'll read this. Let's see, Article 11A of New York State General Municipal Law requires that a list of volunteers that earned a year of service credit during 2018 be certified under oath by the Fire Department and submitted to the program sponsor by March 31st. So I don't know why Greg's supposed to go. Anyway, let's see. Program sponsor must then review and approve the 2018 firefighter records listing. To comply with Article 11A, the village board must sign this form once the certified 2018 firefighter records listing has been reviewed and approved by the board. Once signed, the entire 2018 data requested package should be returned to the Fire Department so that the approved certified listing can be posted for at least 30 days as required by Article 11A.
Okay, and that's Jeff to follow up tomorrow with the two.
So we can, we should sign this tonight though.
Well, it says we're approving.
What's that?
It's, it says we're approving it.
Yes.
And I don't agree.
I think last year when we went for this, we sent it back to them. The changing of the addresses for their pension or their awards or something is more the responsibility of the plan. If they're not notifying the insurance company, whatever, that they've moved, then they're, you know, it's, it's really not a problem in terms of this as it is a problem in terms of them getting their money when they do retire.
Right, when the time comes, yeah.
And it's like their responsibility.
Okay. Although it shows at least one person doesn't live within the area that's covered by the fire company.
But I think they can still be, Michael Edder doesn't either. He lives in Pierceburg.
Yeah, right, right. So it doesn't matter.
I don't think it does. I, it doesn't matter. It's, they can legally be in the Fire Company and not live in the village.
I thought you had to live in the area. No, it doesn't matter. Doesn't matter.
They are in the area. They don't have to live in the village.
Who was responsible for, like say Angela Cracker, she'll pass. Who's responsible for him then putting the claim in for him for whatever? Or was he getting that?
I don't know that there's a death benefit.
Okay.
This, this is, this is the, let me call it the monthly pensions.
Okay.
Retirement.
So he would have been getting it.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think there's a death benefit associated with it. So you want us to all sign a motion?
Yes. So we'll make a motion to accept the Fireman's Award listing as presented to us.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We just have to sign it, agree?
Do you get that to Len or two?
I don't guess it, as long as we have a form.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve batch number 4936 in the amount of $70,557.17.
I'll second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Final, the approval of minutes.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from December 11th.
I'll second. Any discussion?
Just give me one second.
All in favor? Did you do that?
She was, we were holding on.
I was just looking, because there was some adjustments, but I think he caught them. Boy business, boy business. Okay, they're caught.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve workshop meeting 1218, 2018.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Public comment? Yes, Frank.
Frank, I agree. The tunnel under the train tracks, I've noticed just last week and a half, two weeks, that there's always been water coming in the side in the south side direction that builds up to ice in the winter. Now, I guess from this heavy rain's coming in the top, there's actually a crack across the top there. So I'm thinking of sending a note to the MTA. They got a website where you can send in a note and basically ask them to check the tunnel and see if there's some.
Is that our responsibility?
Unless it's already been done.
I think it's villages.
I think it's the villages.
Okay. Well, give me a little background, because a couple of years ago, I sent the same HTA note about their track and their track right over that tunnel, the south, the northbound track rather, had, you know, it had water in the track and the, and the ties were loose. And when the train goes by, the ties are jumping up and down. Track is definitely because they, the gravel there had just eroded or whatever. And so they've been coming in periodically and dumping gravel, compacting it, and, you know, essentially pushing stuff down there right, essentially above this area where this, this crack is and the water just comes in the side, so.
You think it's dropping down into a void or something?
Well, there, you know, I don't really know. Greg is gone, but I mean, there's a lot of water that's flowing around and going in the tunnel today, you're seeing that the bottom of the tunnel doesn't really drain anymore. I don't know if that's a drainage issue. There's just more water infiltrating into the tunnel. I'm not really sure how the, apparently the storm drains, I was gonna ask Jeff, Greg, but he's gone, the storm drains, including just whatever the bottom main street that goes into or supposedly goes into the sewer system. So it potentially infiltrates into that or combines with that. So there may just be more water for whatever reason. Possibly also because that area is compacted now. Maybe in the past it kind of was dispersed, but now it's kind of, I mean, the, just the force, the vibration of compacting it might also be affecting the structure of that. So the village has to look at that?
I will take a look at that.
Thing? Okay.
Yes, Michelle?
Hi, I'll just stand over here so that we can see as well. So a couple of things, both on water as well. Last year, you know, we got the grant from the Environmental Protection Fund and we have been working with CHAZ and to study the parcels in the watershed for Cold Spring and what would be, what are the most important for conservation and also future water supplies if the village would ever need them. We do actually have a draft report that we've produced based on the CHAZ and study and a bunch of other historic studies that we were able to get our hands on. So that'll be something that probably, what I'd like to do is kind of run the draft by maybe, I don't know, Steve, you're interested or someone, one of the trustees and Greg together, Greg Phillips together, and just so that we can refine that before we present it to the village board. And on that topic, this is kind of along the same lines as the reason that that funding was available is the state has, New York State has a big focus on source water protection, both quality and quantity of water and helping small municipalities with their, you know, making sure that they've got good source water protection in place and plans for future supply. So they just announced last week, I don't know if you saw this, but it's a drinking water source protection program where they're inviting applications from municipalities basically for free help from the state to, to implement a water protection program. And that, what they're gonna do, there's a very simple application that can be filled out. I'm happy to leave you the details. It's not a lot of reading. And they're gonna pick 30 municipalities across the state to participate. And basically those 30 municipalities will get a lot of technical resources and help from the state as well as their peers, the other municipalities that are selected for this work, in coming up with water protection program for the future, both to ensure clean supply and, and, you know, enough supply for, yeah, quantity and quality. So applica, unfortunately, applications are due February 15, which is soon, but they only just announced that last Friday. So I thought, I wanted to bring it to the village's attention. And I've got, there's a summary of that and I'll leave, I've got three copies of each thing, but there's a summary of the program. And then there's the application. The application's very straightforward, so I don't know, maybe we could put it on the agenda for a workshop or something in January to see if that's something that the village wants to pursue. The only catch is, it doesn't cost you anything and you're getting like free services from the state, but the catch is you do have to, the village does have to allocate some like staff and trustee time to it. And I know that's all at a premium, but, you know, it's, it's kind of a unique opportunity to access the resources of the state and the DEC to implement one of these programs. So can I just leave you with that? And then would you entertain putting this on the agenda at another meeting in January to talk about it a little bit more when you had a chance to look at it? That's one, that's two copies of the three different documents and that's a third copy. And then I think, I think, I do think that the work that we've done already with CHAZ and then the report that we've produced will be helpful in that process, but it will just be a question of, does the village want to allocate, you know, resources in terms of some of Greg's time and/or trustees' time?
Do you have an idea how much time that is just?
It's, it's really hard to say and I don't know how competitive you'd be, like how many municipalities are gonna apply. Obviously, they're gonna end up with 30. They might get just 30 applicants. And would Cold Spring be competitive? There's only, you know, a couple of thousand people. But I think, I think it could be competitive in terms of a representative of a, you know, smaller village that's trying to manage its own water supplies. I think there's sort of a way to, you know, get some points in the application.
It says it's a three-year program?
Yeah.
So the resources from the municipality have to be available for three years?
That's right, yeah.
What might be interest to them is our sources above ground, where many municipalities have wealth.
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
So we would be competing, I would think they would be looking, would be interested in both.
I think they're gonna want a diverse group. So they'll, they want bigger municipalities, smaller municipalities, and, you know, people that, whose backup is the New York City aqueduct, there's ours is, and you're right, surface water versus groundwater. Yeah. So, yeah. So I'll be in touch, I guess, to see.
Okay, we'll take a look at this and we have, we'll probably get it on the 29th, I think.
Okay, that'd be great.
Twenty second.
Twenty second is our best meeting?
Yeah.
First, second and fourth. We call a special meeting on the 29th. Michelle, the work that you've already done with CHAZ, would any status of that be appropriate to include with our application?
Yeah, I think, I think some of it would be. So if we do, yeah, so let me think about that. If we get something on the calendar, I can bring some summaries of some points that we found in the, in the CHAZ and study that would be relevant for the application.
Should we meet prior to that? You talked about meeting with Greg.
Yeah, that'd be great, yeah. Yeah.
Do you want to email me what times you have and I'll?
Yeah.
Okay.
That sounds good.
I'll talk to Greg. Or you can email him. I'll tell Greg about what's happened.
Yeah, okay, great.
Anything else? Hello Judy, these are new liaisons.
Hi, I just wanted to introduce myself. Judy Farrell on the Phillips Town Board as of last week. And I'm gonna be the liaison to the village board going forward. So just wanted to join you this evening. There's a little conflict with the Board of Ed's meeting, so I had to stop in there first. So I apologize for being late.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And welcome.
Thank you very much.
Well, that, motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, thank you all for coming. It's nice having people here.